Okay, good evening to you all. I'm going to call our work session for the month of June to be in, to be open and to be in order, and I will ask the clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Winkler, Mayor Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Baffier?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And we have heard from Councilmember Singleton,
who is wrapping up his work for the day. He was some distance away, so he will be joining us as soon as he can get here, but it probably will be maybe as much as a half hour or more, so we'll welcome him when he gets here. Okay, council, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, changes? Hearing none. All in favor of adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposition? Say no, and there is none, so thank you very much. I believe I'd like to take a minute to recognize our fire chief, Mr. Poole, who I believe wanted a moment sort of under presentations.
I just have a few brief comments to make, and then we will be on our way. Mayor Marshburn, council members, Town Manager Dickerson, and the entire budget team, the Garner Fire Rescue is here tonight to do one simple yet very important thing. We are here to say thank you. Webster Dictionary defines "thank you" as "a polite expression of one's gratitude," and that's exactly why we stand before you tonight. We entered this budget season amidst a pandemic that none of us have ever dealt with, and as firefighters, we generally try to plan for the worst. I had done just that for the upcoming fiscal financial outlook. This is the tenth season as the budget, as the fire chief of this town, and through that, we've developed relationships that at times I did not think were possible, and I'm truly appreciative of that. Not only did you finish what you started by completing a fair and equitable pay plan for our employees, but also providing adequate staffing for our units during a time of unrest and uncertainty. I am also proud of the men standing with me tonight. They've taken their personal time to come here and express their appreciation for your support. We have all made hard decisions in life that have gone unnoticed by others. We've done good deeds that went unrecognized, but we're here tonight to make sure that doesn't happen. To the Town Manager and the entire budget team, I want to personally thank you for working with me, for trusting me, and making me feel welcome through this budget process. To the mayor and the members of our council, I want to thank you for your continued support in recognizing the needs of our department. So in summary, quite simply, thank you.
Chief Poole, I'm not sure what is a proper response, but I am impressed with the fact that you took the time to come before us this evening. And I start to say all of your staff, I guess there's somebody still out there somewhere, but thanks to you all, it's an impressive display. Don't know that I've seen this many firemen in one place at one time, certainly not in this chamber, but I would, I'll let council speak for themselves, but I think what the chief has said is a testament to this council. It's been a tough budget year, and so we had a lot of concerns, but we were able, I think, to do some things that needed to be done, and certainly the fire department was part of that, and so I think you'll certainly continue to have as much support as we can render to the fire department. Let me just say to you personally, thank you for the, for the work that you do on a day-by-day basis. You are truly our thin blue line, part of that, and our first responders, and all the other things that you're called, but in my mind, one of the good, good things to refer to you all as is heroes. That's a fitting attribute, I think, and there are others, but thank you for the good work that you do. I'm glad that budget-wise, we were able to do what we were able to do this year. Thank you, chief, for your leadership with the department. And with that, I'll see if any other council members have any comments they'd like to make.
Yes, sir, I would. I'm feeling a little overwhelmed seeing all of you here in your uniforms. I've never seen you, this many of you together in one place at one time, which just underscores what we have in the Garner Police Department, excuse me, Fire Department? I knew who I'm talking to. I'm going to add a little humor here, and I hope, I hope the person I'm going to highlight is going to speak to me after this tonight, but years ago, when I first became the liaison to the Fire Department, there was a young man who applied for a job as a firefighter, and he was supposed to come to a meeting one night to be interviewed, or questioned, whatever you want to call it, and he didn't show up. And so whomever was in charge of that process started calling around to other stations to say, where is this young man? And he was very busy in one of the other stations, cleaning the bathroom. He was so excited about being a fireman and so committed to his job here, and that, that's an indication of what each and every one of you exemplify. You do your job, you do it well, you do it in exemplary fashion, and we just, we really do appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger?
I just want to say, no matter what else happens, my time on council, this is one of the moments I'll never forget. Very humbling that you all came here, and I just want to say, as a representative of all the citizens of Garner, thank you for what you do. You deserve the thanks. Period.
Vance?
I'd like to say thank you to all of you all. I remember I had to make a call to emergency services for a young man, my son, who was in medical distress, and then you all arrived there, the team arrived there professionally and expertly handled the situation, calmed myself, my wife down, and took care of my son. That was many years ago, when I had hair, and it was black, but I definitely appreciate you all then, and I still remember that moment to this day. Thank you all again for your services.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Chief Poole, being a former volunteer fireman back in the days when you were a very young man, and I'm aging myself, and shooting sunny bridges off of a truck one night after cleaning it up with a fire hose and thought I was going to die, and this is so impressive. Guys, I want to tell you what, y'all look good. It's giving me goosebumps up here to see all this, and I'm very proud of you. Proud to be one of the Brotherhood. Of course, I aged out and worked my way out of it, but thank you for the wonderful job y'all have done, and it was a pleasure working with Chief Poole. It was last year, he and I chatted a little bit and said, I said, where do we need to go? And we were very open about some things, and I'm glad we fixed all of them. And for everybody, getting this pace situation squared away, getting your new firemen that you need, and we know growth is coming. We know Station 5 is going to be down there, and we'll be dealing with that before we know it, and, but you've got a very fireman-friendly board up here. I think I can speak for everybody up here, because we appreciate the fine job that you folks do, and you're away from your families, you put it all on the line, and I've seen a lot of you come up through the service, and I'm very proud of you, and it's a pleasure when I see you on the street out there, and, because anytime I've ever needed, y'all were right on the spot over there on Navin Lane. That's Navin Lane, now, first house on the left, and so, but thank you for what you do. We're very proud of you, and we're just looking forward to the next few years. There's no telling where this is going to go, Mr. Mayor, but whatever the fire department needs, let us know. We're behind you. Thank you for your job, and I will not get on that ladder truck.
And just, some of you may know, Mr. Singleton, obviously, is not here yet. He's a little late tonight, but I won't try to speak for him, but I'm confident that if he were here, he would agree with the expressions of gratitude that have been expressed here, and his admiration for the good work you do. So go with our thanks, and as they say, stay safe out there.
Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight.
Thank you. Okay. You can stick around for the rest of this if you want to, but I suspect you have other things to get to.
I want to get out of this polyester. It's my...
Mr. Manager, I have the first item up as a discussion of the use of legislative conditional zoning. I don't see Mr. Trees.
Yeah, he's, he's on teams.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, yeah, he's right there in front of me on my computer. Jeff, I apologize. You are there, my friend, so good to see you, sir, and we will turn the, this item over to you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, this goes smoothly. We're having a little thunder and lightning here, so let, so let me know if anything doesn't come through okay.
Thank you.
But the planning department did want to come before you tonight to introduce the first part of some amendments that will be coming forward as part of the legislation that streamlines and simplifies some of the subdivision and requirements that are currently in state statute. This is what we know as Chapter 160D, and I'm just going to try to adjust my volume here a little bit.
Much better. Thank you.
So I could tell there was a bit of feedback. So back to Chapter 160D, these are amendments that every jurisdiction is having to do. They're largely procedural, and we have been given a deadline of July 1st of 2021 to go ahead and get these changes implemented. One of the biggest items that is affected in our UDO is the use of conditional use zoning and conditional use permits. And I tried to describe for you in the memo a little bit of the background to planning in North Carolina, and how the use of conditional use zoning and conditional use permits came about, and subsequently, what many jurisdictions have moved to, which is similarly called, but very different, just conditional zoning. The 160D regulations will actually specifically prohibit our use of conditional use permits and conditional use zonings together. It will deal away with them altogether and actually expressly authorize conditional zoning, so we need to make the switch. There's a number of advantages to this. I think it's something that we would want to do anyways, but we wanted to go ahead and introduce that to you tonight, because we do need some direction before we move this package fully to you again. So I will start off by saying that the requested action in your cover sheet tonight is actually not yet to move forward to a public hearing. It does describe the four-step process of a text amendment. First, we come to you and introduce the topic at a work session, and then we agree whether or not to move it forward to the public hearing and through the rest of the review process. This is a preliminary step, and I apologize for getting that slightly confused, but we will be coming back to you with a full discussion of all of the 160D-related amendments at a subsequent meeting, but in order to move more effectively in that direction, we wanted to have this introductory conversation about conditional zoning, what it is, what are the benefits, and how to move forward with that when we do adopt the 160D package that will be coming to you in a few months. So I would like to share my screen here briefly, because we do have a lot of uses in our use table that require currently a special use permit. So a special use permit is still an acceptable means of reviewing a development application, but I believe that we tend to use it probably more than we should. The special use permit process is directly related to conditional use permits that are now being quote-unquote outlawed. They involve that quasi-judicial process that we all seem to not enjoy, and I apologize. Looks like my sharing screen is not going to work, so let me go ahead and stop at that. What I was going to bring up on the screen was our use table, so that we could scroll through that for the benefit to our watching. Special use permits typically are those that is a process that we use for uses that require an impartial kind of hearing that doesn't have any ex parte communication and not a lot of looking. Just want to pause here and make sure everything is still okay.
If there was, if there was a table up just a few minutes ago, that's not the one he was seeking to refer to, is that right?
I think his function of sharing the screen is causing some additional feedback, so I think he has chosen to take the screen sharing down. He's now, I think, given that there's, he's oriented you to it, I think he can refer to it possibly the one that's in your packet and help with some of the, the feedback issues that that was causing.
Thanks, John. So again, special use permits are generally something that you only want to use in limited circumstances, where the use truly has the concern for the community as a whole, and you really want to get at whether or not the use is appropriate in town anywhere, whether it runs afoul potentially of the general health, safety, general welfare, and morals of the community. So again, we have a lot of uses currently that are identified as special uses, but really, when you look at them, they're not so much questionably appropriate for the district. It has more to do with whether or not the specific site is designed appropriately to fit the community. When you go down the list, you see things like a community center. There are certainly impacts that a community center brings, but you expect a community center to be in the heart of a community. So really, you want to be tuned in to what the site plan looks like, how it relates to the properties around it. Conditional zoning is now something that we can put in our toolbox and require it as the process for review. So conditional zoning, just like a special use permit, still has to come before the council, so it gets that heightened elevated level of review, but it takes it out of the quasi-judicial setting where you're not supposed to have ex parte communication, members of the general public can't give their opinions on something, they have to be qualified experts in order to give testimony. And special use permits also are not supposed to go to the planning commission, because everything, again, is supposed to take place within that special public hearing where everybody's process and rights are being extra protected. So we've been doing something that really is not a matter of best practice by allowing special use permit applications to go to the planning commission for input outside of this, of this hearing process. There are communities that do it. We're not the only ones, but every time that I talk with folks at the school of government or other legal experts and town attorneys at different conferences, they all come back and say, you really shouldn't be doing that. So the conditional zoning is a process that follows a general zoning review, which we do have. We don't do it very often, but it also is similar to the text amendment process. So you have your public hearing at the beginning, and then that allows the council to refer to the planning commission for additional input, and then come back to council for a final decision. So it does create this three-step process, but it does allow for more public input through the planning commission. We advertise the public hearing, and that gets out to the community. That's been difficult with special use permits, because you can't do the public notice too far in advance, so usually you end up having that planning commission meeting without much public involvement, because you can't advertise that far in advance to get the public to both the planning commission and the public hearing. And I know a lot of this is probably confusing. I'm trying to, trying to convey just some of the practical issues that we have with it, and why the public may not feel as involved as they might like to be in, in certain decisions, and then making sure that we're stepping through things really in the proper fashion. So we took a look at the use table, and we tried to separate out those uses where really it's the site plan that everybody wants to see and everybody wants to consider as part of their rezoning decision, and we can go ahead and require that as the process that the applicant has to go through. And then we've proposed just leaving those uses which have the potential to be most offensive to a larger part of the community or the whole community as special uses, where you really do want to get at more of the expert testimony and the expert testimony only, and you want to be sure that you're being very precise with your process and dotting your i's and crossing your t's, so that you have a very defensible position when it comes to voting the application up or down. Conditional zoning by being in the legislative realm as opposed to the quasi-judicial realm gives you as a council much more flexibility as well in terms of your decision-making. You don't have to hold yourselves to the special use permit criteria. You look at the zoning and the site plan together as a whole. It's one process, it's one hearing, everybody can talk, everybody gets to see the site plan. So in, in some respects, it's very similar to that joint conditional use permit zoning process we have been using, but it is much more simplified. We can do the advertising in advance, the public gets to be involved throughout the entire process, and everybody gets to see what's of most concern. So finally, just in keeping with the purpose of these amendments for 160D, this is a new tool that's being introduced that we have to include anyhow. We don't want to make any major changes to our use table at this time, so we haven't proposed adding uses in districts where they're not already allowed, so we're purely focusing on just those uses in the use table where they're currently identified as a special use, and trying to delineate between those that we would prefer to go to a conditional zoning process versus those that would stay in the special use permit process. So with that being said, I'm going to wrap that up and see if you all have any questions that maybe I can get to more specifically, because I know this is a lot to try to explain and understand in a relatively short amount of time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Yeah, I'm sure there will be some comments and/or questions. Without jumping too far ahead, do, do I understand that after this discussion this evening, that the, I guess the three steps that are noted under detailed notes would be our next, our next action, that is, there would be a public hearing for public input, referral to the planning commission for additional input, and then council decision? Those, would it follow in that sequence?
Eventually, yes, we would get there, but I will introduce that one more additional step, that we will come back to you one more time at a work session with a complete 160D package.
Okay, okay, so we're still away, away from actual implementation, and of course, by statute, I guess we have until 2021, even though I'm assuming once we go through these steps, we would start to implement these in, at our regular meetings.
Yes, we can adopt these whenever we want to between now and then, and as soon as we do, it'll be effective.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go to council members at this time for questions or comments, and start on my left with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good presentation. I'm still trying to digest all of it, and so it's a lot to learn, but it looks like from the gist of what I'm seeing and what you're saying, this is going to be an opportunity to simplify this process and maybe eliminate a lot of duplication and undue work, still accomplishing the same goal, but streamlining it and simplifying. Is that a fair statement, is what I've got out of all this?
I would definitely agree with that. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I look forward to the work sessions, and as we get into details on this thing, but it, if it improves what we're having to deal with now, you know, I think we're on the right track here, Mr. Mayor, so I look forward to the work sessions, so we can really kind of get in, take it apart, and, and discuss it in further. Thank you.
Okay, I'll jump around this way this time and go to Mr. Vance next.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Dallinger?
Hey, Jeff. How does this timeline for adopting these changes mesh with the UDO rewrite process that's happening now?
Right, right, so that, certainly July 1st of 2021 will come around sooner than our projected finish date for the UDO rewrite. So again, we're trying to separate that and keep this proposal that's going to be coming to you very focused on just what's required to implement the changes from 160D being adopted. So it will be kind of a, little bit of a precursor to the UDO rewrite, whereas the UDO rewrite will be the opportunity to really introduce major changes in the ways we approach things. This package will be just more on procedures and seeing how this conditional zoning process, how we want to fit that in.
So how is the, the timing? I know that they were doing sort of tranches or modules for, on the UDO rewrite committee, and I believe this part of that work is fairly early in that process, the, this, these zoning issues, and so what I'm seeing is that the, the review of the UDO and that committee is going to precede the work and recommendations for these changes, so how are those going to be wrapped back into the So how are those going to be wrapped back into the conversation that the UDO committee is going to be having?
Right. So we recently went through chapters one and two, and I believe it was nine and 11, which are mostly the ones that are affected by 160D as well as Article 3, which is what we're going to be discussing next week with the UDO committee. So we what we have tried to do with the consultants is make sure that we're tackling those articles first as part of the rewrite process that are most affected by 160D. So we're in fact discussing both of those with the committee at the same time. We've discussed, like I say, one, two, nine, and 11 with them already, and then Article 3 coming up very soon here next week. The only other thing really is just the use table, which I'm kind of bringing to you today to try to get some direction from. But our hope is is that we will have addressed the chapters most affected by 160D early on in the total UDO rewrite process so that we're not duplicating our efforts and and having to backtrack.
Are these recommendations going to then go back to that committee to integrate with that conversation to then come as a recommendation out of that committee for sort of an early implementation of certain parts of the UDO? Or is it? I just I guess I'm trying to say there are two different tracks of work going on, and they don't seem to be talking or coordinated or potentially not.
Right, right. So they definitely are on our end and with the consultant. There's been a little bit of discussion about how much to involve the steering committee on these 160D changes because there's not a whole lot of leeway to most of the changes that you'll see coming forward. They're pretty much things that you have to do in order to be compliant with the way the new legislation is worded. This whole issue of conditional zoning is probably the one thing that kind of lies outside of that, and we'll be discussing that in in the coming weeks. So that way, we will have had the the more substantive discussions with the committee, but the the attempt is really never to make the 160D changes a lot of focus with the committee because there's not as much opportunity for interpretation and legal room and direction to take. It's kind of like you have to do these things. But we will have talked with them about about all of these various things, maybe just not in its much detail. For example, if it says that there's a change that you have to give, just say, notice to the public within prior to 25 days, and currently our ordinance is 15, well, that's just something you have to change. It's not really anything up for for debate. But anything, the few things that are somewhat debatable as to how we implement them, we will have discussed and will proceed prior to this package coming forward to public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Behringer?
Yes, I just have a question, Jeff. If my my memory serves me correctly, several years ago, this process was not as complicated. And then the legislature added some more conditions, and then it became more complicated? Am I remembering correctly?
Um, not not exactly. I think our understanding and realization as development picked up and more more applications started to go through that joint zoning quasi judicial process. Some of those, some of the issues that I pointed out in the memo just became more apparent. And some of it just happened to do with the way calendars worked out and scheduling. The the biggest thing for me personally really was the fact that we were advertising for the public hearing ahead of the planning commission. And the way the calendar was working out, that was actually putting our public advertisements out in advance of the 10 to 25 day window, which is prescribed in the statutes for the public hearing. So yeah, some of the things have just kind of gotten more complicated as a result of things becoming more, I think, legally scrutinized than maybe in the past. And then there have been some tweaks as well by the legislature, but for the most part, I think it's just been more intense scrutiny given to the process that we had.
Okay, just it seems to me that over the past 10 or 12 years, it's it's just gotten a little more complicated about how the process works and when you can say what and to whom. And we didn't used to have that. So this sounds like we might be moving into a more streamlined approach now, which would be welcome.
Yes, this will, this will, yeah, this will put our general rezonings, our conditional zonings where you see the site plan and our text amendments all in the same process. So we won't have to go back and forth between a legislative only versus a legislative slash quasi judicial together. It'll just all be legislative, very straightforward, not having to worry about who testifies when, and like you say, having the public involved throughout the process as opposed to trying to just fit them in during that hearing because you can't communicate outside of it.
Right, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Vance, I'll go back to you if you have anything at this time.
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jeff, I sort of locked into, I guess it's the second formal paragraph on page five of our agenda where it talks about the history there. And of course, Charlotte began to require site plan. And just reading there, it says, although not expressly allowed by general statute at the time it gained in popularity with other local governments, many communities have since switched their processes, but today any holdouts like Garner are now required to make the switch. So do I do I understand that to mean that in many places in North Carolina, the the change has has already been made by many municipalities? Is that right? And so?
Yeah, yeah, there. When I was in planning school in Chapel Hill, the the running commentary was always that the closer you are to Raleigh, the more difficult it is to think outside the box. Because we're so close to the legislative bodies and making sure that we're operating, you know, we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So yeah, conditional zoning started in Charlotte as a way to try to simplify that joint process that we still struggle with today. It had the support of of developers and and the folks in in the government setting. So it didn't become this issue that anybody really wanted to litigate because it was working for for everyone. And it kind of just slowly crept across the state. When I started my career in Burlington, we actually were rewriting our ordinance then and and decided to go ahead and adopt the conditional zoning on the advice of of some folks at the School of Government who said, you know, hey, this is this is where things are moving towards anyways. And then it turned out it wasn't long after that that the legislature did put conditional zoning into the statutes. And so now we've just been existing in this phase where both processes are legal, and now we're going to be moving to a phase where we're getting rid of that old complicated process altogether, and everybody recognizes that the legislative only process is the way to go.
Okay, so for developers, it sounds like, you know, these changes will be make things more consistent really across all municipalities in the state of North Carolina so that they don't have to prepare or plan differently as they're moving from one municipality to the other in making their presentations. Would that be true?
Yes, yes, it will have that effect for sure.
Okay. All right, I'll make one second round. Mr. Matthews, anything else? You're good? Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Just a quick question. What was the sort of timeline you imagined for the hearing and coming all the way back to council?
Our hope is to, we've targeted the end of the year, so December. So our hope would be to come back to the full 160D package within the next couple of months. So I'd say maybe in about 60 days, so probably not in not in July, but in August, and then move forward with the public hearing and planning commission input, and then back to you for final adoption, hopefully by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. Mr. Vance, anything? Okay. All right, well, Jeff, I think that probably concludes the questions that council has tonight. We'll look forward to obviously further hearing from you, I guess, at a work session in the not too distant future. And thank you for sort of being our, I guess I'd call you our in-house expert on this matter. We'll continue to rely on your your expertise and instruction as we move forward. And so look forward to to the next round of this process. Any other comments you have?
No, thank you all very much. And just a quick thank you to those of you who knew about my father's passing and reached out to me. That was very much appreciated, completing my 14 days as of today. So thank you again.
Okay, stay strong, friend. I know you will be, and be blessed, okay? Thank you. John or Rodney, anybody care to add any other comments? You're good, okay. Okay, Jeff, I think this is your only manner here tonight, so maybe you can sign off and go relax if you want to, huh?
Yes, thank you.
All right, God bless you, friend. Okay, thank you very much. All right, that will conclude that particular item. So we'll next, excuse me, yeah, there's Mr. Dixon already. We'll next move to item two on the agenda. CHS MOU agreement. And let me see, Rodney, you want to recognize? I see at least one of the historical members here, Ms. Paget out there. Are there others? Oh, yeah, excuse me, Ms. Bass, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you with your mask on.
Yeah, Mayor of Town Council, while I'm searching for the presentation here, introduce Karen Paget, who's on the board of the Garner Area Historical Society, and Judy Bass sitting behind her. I'm not seeing Ms. Whaley out tonight. Okay, all right, but I know she would have liked to have been here. So what I wanted to do is while the depot is still under construction and moving along, we wanted to bring the contract that the town of Garner would have with the Garner Area Historical Society back to you just to make sure you're going to be agreeable on the terms so that once the construction's done, the society is anxious to get in there and start their exhibit and the things they're going to be doing inside. So we went through this last last summer, probably July timeframe, and so a lot of it's going to be repeat, but I just want to make sure that we're in good shape on this. And also, there's another request in here that the Garner Area Historical Society had that we will present to you after I talk about the the contract. So basically, and you have a copy of this PowerPoint in your packet there. So basically, the town of Garner paid to have the depot moved from Garner Road to its the site now at the corner of Pearl and Main. The intent was the building would be moved there and outfitted and renovated to operate as a museum. The town would retain ownership of the building and the property. We own that that lot as well as caboose, the caboose. And we would have this contract, which I'm presenting tonight, would be pretty much a memorandum of understanding, kind of like an operating agreement we would have with the Garner Area Historical Society, which is a 501(c)(3) organization to operate the museum, the depot as a museum that would be open to the general public. This contract also includes portions of Pearl Street, which they use for office space and for storage. So and we did delineate in the contract what areas are open for their use. I think we had a lot of discussion last year about the term. I think we wanted it to be something meaningful if they're going to, we're going to put this type of money into the building, and also they're going to put that effort. We wanted them to have their reassurance that they would be able to operate it for a good amount of time. So it is a 10-year term, which is, I think, adequate for what they want to do. And of course, it is renewable, so that's the term we're talking about. And so one of the things we want to do is talk about delineation of responsibilities. So the biggest, some of the biggest things include daily janitorial, for example. And the way this is going to be laid out, the town is primarily going to be responsible for the larger items, pretty much on the exterior of the building, and the Garner Area Historical Society will be responsible for more of the interior type items that are probably can be attributed to the operations of the museum. So that includes things for them like the janitorial services. They, of course, will build the exhibits and maintain the exhibits and also the the displays, any, you know, shelving or any type of display cases and those type of things. They would also be responsible for some of the plantings of the flowers. I think we have some green thumbs in the society, and so they would take care of that. As part of the outside, this is maybe one of the exceptions to the outside piece, they plan to use part of the, oh, I guess I need to advance the slides, right? They plan to use the part of the the landscape and site plan as a fundraiser, and that would be to have engraved pavers similar to what you would see out at the Veterans Memorial. And so they would maintain that and use it as a fundraiser. That would not be part of the required sidewalk. That would be extra walking surface and also maybe even patio type space. They would also maintain the collection of the exhibits, and that would also include the disposition, which there's a section that talks about that. So the town would not be a part of those day-to-day decisions. What we will do is maintain the electrical water and sewer utility, which is part of the building per se and the use of the building, the fire alarm and extinguisher, I got a typo there, but the annual extinguisher inspections, any snow removal from the parking lot, pedestrian walkways, and do the the lawn mowing and general landscaping. So some of the the larger things, kind of like we would do in a park or any of our other facilities, similar like like nature center or or a a ball clubhouse or something like that. We would also maintain the sidewalks, and those would be the required sidewalks along Pearl Street. There'll be sidewalk from the depot over to Pearl Street that would be handicap accessible. That would be part of the town. Also, the structural building maintenance or replacements when funds are available. So if there's anything major, we would talk about, depending on what it is, we would talk about what it is and and how we would, who would pay for that. There'll be some additions that the Historical Society may have fundraisers to pay for, but we would be in discussion with them and talk about the scope of those and and how to pay for it. We would dispose of trash outside if there's outside receptacles. And then this came up, so last year, you know, they'll change light bulbs and those type of things, but if there's something out of reach, this is basically saying, you know, we will help them if there's, you know, something small or like that that they need help with. We're we're not saying we're going to be totally out of all of the inside items. So if there's something simple we can do, like change a light bulb, for example, in high place, we'll certainly, you know, bring a ladder and those type of things. If you look starting on page, well, 23 in my agenda book here, I'm not sure where it is on your electronic copy.
21, or at least the page number.
There's a a draft of the contract, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but it, like any other contract, it spells out the the term. Compensation would be a dollar per year, and we're not really charging them. We see it as amenity to the town, extension of some of the services and amenities that we have here in the town already. We talk about liability, and then talk about what the scope of the We talk about liability, and then talk about what the scope of the management of the museum would entail. So, the Garner Area Historical Society would, you know, go out and get volunteers to work the museum, they would work the museum themselves also, they would go out and try to get exhibits, they will maintain the collection, the inventory, trade those out, change them out from time to time, they would be responsible for keeping their own books and running that, just like a nonprofit, basically. It would be open to the public, that's the purpose, is that they would try to have a schedule that was ample enough for the public to be able to visit the museum and enjoy the amenities in there. That was something we were not able to do in the previous location because of it being in the right-of-way, pretty much trapped between the right-of-way of the railroad and Garner Road, which created a dangerous situation, there wasn't a lot of parking there, so this site's going to be more amenable to public interaction. One of the things in here is disposition of objects. We added this recently, that is something new that the Garner Area Historical Society and I had a conversation about, because from time to time, they're going to have to change out items, they'll have some items that are on loan, they'll have some items that, you know, if they get damaged, they'll have to remove or whatever. So it needed to be some clear language in here, and some of the language in here calls for them to have a policy on how they would handle those things, because those are the things that could kind of get the town in the middle of a dispute between somebody that owned something they thought was precious versus having the Historical Society have it on loan. So that's going to be totally up to them, so they'll have a policy that deals with that. And they also include it, like I said before, it includes maintenance of the brick patio and the display of internal and external objects, so if they have some things outside, they would be responsible for that. We would try to limit our handling of certain things that are, especially that are on loan, just because of damage, so it spells out that. They would have insurance and indemnify the town, and some miscellaneous things, they're considered independent contractor, none of them will be considered employees of the town, and then, the rest is what you basically would see in a contract, the legalese, no waivers, and the governing law would be the state of North Carolina, et cetera, et cetera. And then we have new on the last page, and we do have this in all of our contracts with our program partners, just a nondiscrimination assurance, nondiscrimination assurances, in just basic language, that not to discriminate against anybody based on these protected classes here, so. And then page 29 shows which areas they would have use of inside of Pearl Street, so that's pretty self-explanatory, as well as they would have use of the parking. We did not build separate parking at the depot because it's adjacent to the Pearl Street and feel like that's enough parking. Later phases may add more parking on Pearl Street, and that is shown on a future site plan, as well as some other amenities that would be phases on into the future. So that's basically it as far as the contract, and before I move on, is there any, any questions for me or the Historical Society?
Remind me of the number of parking spaces here, is this depiction here showing the number, or is that just?
It shows them all.
Okay.
So five, five, right.
Yeah, okay, right there at the.
And there are more parking, there is more parking, it's not owned by the town, but there are other parking spaces adjacent to the Pearl Street building.
Okay, council members, any, I'll start this time over here, Phil, start with Mr. Vance, if he has any questions.
Just one, when is it going to be open for operation?
I knew that was going to be a question, that was going to be the last thing I covered, but since you asked now, I can.
Or if it's a part of your presentation, we can wait.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that was it.
That was it.
Okay, I'll keep going this way, just telling you.
There's no mention of the caboose anywhere in these documents, is there going to, is there projected to be any use of that, and is that going to be covered at some, or would that be covered at a different time, as an addendum to this contract?
No, that should, it should be mentioned in here, that the caboose is part of this contract, and if, I may have omitted it, but for now, the caboose will be mainly a display item, there will not be interior use of the caboose.
Okay, if you could find where that is, I know I saw in reference in the whereas, but it says, "Town owns real property located at 110 Pearl Street and the building located there on."
Okay, yeah, I may need to add that.
So I didn't see that.
Yeah.
The other, let's see, I got that. In section 2.7, where you make the allusion to use of Pearl Street, I would just add in there, specified in Exhibit A, so that it's clear that there is an actual attachment to the document. In 2.9, the disposition of objects, is there an existing policy now, or is that going to be drafted later?
It'll be drafted, it'll be drafted by them later.
My recommendation would be that it be drafted before the contract is signed, so then there's no question about what that, what it entails, and then it can be included by reference to this document, and then it's set, and we don't have to worry about it again. And similarly, in section 4.2, under insurance, it says, "I'll maintain general liability insurance," then there's a clause, line there that says, "A certificate evidencing this insurance will be submitted to the town prior to moving into the town buildings." I would actually recommend that the general liability insurance be purchased before we enter into the contract.
Yes, yes.
Because there could be a time lag, and you're showing people to fundraise around the property, and somebody falls over and breaks a wrist, and who's responsible, it's town property, but it's the Historical Society that's doing the tour, so that, and I wouldn't put the burden on us then later to ask for the certificate, and then somebody forgets, and that'd be my other recommendation on that. I think they want to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we actually have, already have.
Okay.
It is to be renewed.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. The last piece for the, that caught my eye, that was section 5.9, the nondiscrimination, I think it's probably prudent to add gender identity and religion in there as well, even if they're maybe not federally protected, I think gender identity may not, might not be, but I think it's.
Yeah, this is based on, I guess, what's considered protected classes, I may have to check with the attorney on that, this, that language was reviewed by attorney before we started using it, so, but I'll, I'll look into that.
I would check and see if, if it's thorough, and then I'd also check to see if there's anything problematic with adding the other two.
That's a.
And we may be able to do something more stringent, but those were the, maybe the minimum, but I'll have to, I'll have to check on it.
It's pretty much standard language that we use. Contracts, isn't it, Rodney?
It is, it came, it came word for word off of an existing program partner contract, so.
Okay.
But I, I can look into.
Okay.
Those two things.
Anything else?
That's all.
Ms. Page, here.
One question, are there eventual plans to use the caboose as a attraction, or are we not that far along yet?
We're not that far along yet. Right now, we did put it on a concrete pedestal with, on a piece of track, to make it look a little more authentic, and we're going to paint it, give it a fresh coat of paint, and have it where it can be looked at from the outside. We would have to, in order to open it up, the inside, we'd have to make it handicap ADA accessible, which would include putting a ramp and a deck on it, and we were not prepared to do that in this phase.
Okay.
And it would need some extensive renovation on the inside also.
Can Judy speak, please?
Yeah, Judy, could you, could you come forward, I think Rick wanted to make sure anybody speaks is up at the podium there, is that right?
While she's coming up, can I ask, are we going to get an engine that we can connect to that caboose, so it looks like we're pulling?
Wouldn't that be fun?
Yeah, no.
Our plans for the caboose, the town has agreed to, can I take this off?
Sure.
The town has agreed to paint it, so from the outside, it'll look more aesthetically pleasing. We have reached out to some railroad museums about getting advice on how to renovate the inside and make it handicap, handicapped accessible. There are a couple of grants out there that we will pursue as soon as we get the go-ahead from them to renovate the inside. We would love to see, see it used as like, maybe kids can go in and out, and, so that is one of our future goals, but near-future goals.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, I'll give you a minute to settle in and go to Mr. Matthews for any question he has.
Not at this time, Mr. Matthews. I'm okay right now.
Okay, all right. Anybody else, further questions, comments? I know Mr. Dixon has some other, another item he needs to mention in regards to this, so why don't you go ahead with that, Mr. Dixon?
Okay, I can come back to Mr. Singleton if he has any questions. So, the other item along with this that is new, that you had not seen before, the Historical Society has a request that they be able to serve alcohol on the premises of the inside and on the premises of the historic depot, very similar to what we do at GPAC, very similar to what happens at downtown events, and we're talking about mainly, you know, namely, beer and wine, it would all be regulated by ABC permits and those type of things. That would require a change to the town ordinance, and I have the section in there, section 11-17, and, so they did want you to consider that, and if they want to speak on how that's going to help them, I'll give them, if you want to hear from them, Mayor, on how that will complement what they plan to do at the facility.
Okay. Ms. Paget, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, we would love the ability to be able to have, for example, a reception for sponsors and donors, and be able to serve wine, have a wine and cheese-type reception, so that is, it would not be on a regular basis, it would be for special events, so that is the basis of our request, to be able to have.
Good, thank you. Anybody have a question, comment from Ms. Paget? Thank you, thank you very much. So, Mr. Dixon, are you finished? Do you have anything else?
Well, I will talk about the schedule real quick.
Okay.
I know everybody's anxious to see it open. So right now, the roof is mostly complete, they are finalizing some of the trim pieces this week, they're currently working on finalizing door installation and window change-out this week and next week, and then after that is done, they should have the exterior painted by the end of July, and following that, there will be a deck installed, and that deck will include a handicap ADA accessible ramp. That, the ramping was not required in the previous location, but since we moved it and did extensive renovation, just the fact that it moved requires us to comply with current ADA standards, so we will have to put a ramp at two of the, two of the entrances, it has three entrances, but it has two different floor levels on the inside, so you're going to see a ramp at one end, and then you'll see a deck and a ramp at the other end, and that's required to be able to get to both levels. There was some thought early on about putting one of the ramps inside, so you could get from one level to another, but that would have taken considerable floor space, and possibly presented a trip hazard too, so we decided to put all the ramping on the outside of the building. And then after that, Public Works will, well, let me go back, will paint the caboose in August, and then after that, will do some final grading with landscaping and installation of sidewalk from the depot to Pearl Street by mid-August. So, that's the timeframe we're working with right now. We did get off-schedule, like, I'm sure a lot of people, some, because of COVID-19 and manufacturing, and it was slower to get materials, and, and then also, you know, we were replacing some of the roof, we ended up replacing the entire roof, some of it was damaged in the move by the railroad, the movers hit the railroad arm, alarm, signal light, I guess you'd call it. So some of those things have slowed, slowed down, slowed us down. But other than that, that's basically where we are, and the Historical Society will have to speak to how long they think it would take them to make the renovations inside and get it open, because I'm not sure the extent of what they're planning to do, so, and maybe they haven't fully planned it out, but they have some ideas.
Well, during all the quarantine and staying at home, we've been working behind the scenes on getting our, the exhibits in our head and where we're going to put things. Karen has drawn a real elaborate plan about the way things are going to look. So I guess what I'm saying is, we have gotten, you know, we're moving along still without being in the building. How long it will take us, once we get in the building, we kind of thought we would be in there earlier than August or September, I don't, I don't know. Our plan was to be up and ready to go by December, that could possibly be delayed. I just don't know that I can give a date right now as to, you know, when we'll be open for business.
And I'm sure COVID-19's going to complicate that, and what type of restrictions on gatherings and public places and those type of things, so.
Well, we're very excited about getting moving, so it, we're going to move as fast as we can possibly move, given all the circumstances that we're dealing with.
Ms. Bass, I wouldn't want to inquire unnecessarily, but I'm a little curious, and I think members of the public might would know, if, what you envisioned the price of admission being to go there, and I guess, would you have group rates for school groups or whatever, those things you've talked about?
We don't have any plans in charge in any admission.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
And we do, you know, for, for groups either, but we do hope to, you know, get a system set up where we will have groups coming in, being it, people from out of town, seniors, schools, so we're very excited about group tours. We're mostly excited about the genealogy library. Ms. Whaley has been working behind the scenes diligently, and will almost have that ready to go as soon as we walk into the museum, I do believe.
Okay, goes without saying, I hope you'll invite the mayor and the council members over there fairly soon after you get open, anyway.
We will give you a sneak preview.
Wow, okay, thank you. Anybody have questions for Ms. Bass while she's there? Okay, thank you, thank you.
That's the conclusion.
I believe the action, I'm sorry?
Oh.
Yeah, I believe the action you're looking at from council is basically to, I don't know, to give a thumbs up, and we'd bring this back as a consent item, is that what you envision?
Yes, at a future, future date, once we get some of these other items, yeah, once we get policy written, we'll, we'll work with them to get a policy written on disposition, there's plenty of examples out there, so that should be pretty quick, and then, they already have the insurance, so yes, come in. And then, I'll have to work with the town attorney to see whether the current contract as drafted does not have any provisions about the alcohol on-site, so I may need to add some, a clause or two, just talking about that, so, but I didn't want to be presumptuous and put that in there at this time, so. But if nobody has any concerns about that, I can get something put in.
Are we, are we discussing the change to the ordinance?
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, you have questions about, I think he wants to talk about the change to the ordinance, but yes. Yeah. I presented, I presented a change to the ordinance that would allow alcohol, I think Mr. Dellinger has comments.
I have a question.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I have a question, because ABC permits are not my forte, so I was curious, is the, like, for example, when the DGA does their. So I was curious, is like, for example, when the DGA does their rodeos, and they have people that do beer and things like that, how, does the permit follow the organizer, the bringer of the alcohol, or is it given to the host temporarily on an event basis?
Well, I think it depends on whether it's being sold or served. And at the G-PAC, we have our own permit, and we have, I know we had some employees that get trained and serve safe or whatever it's called, and, you know, they have to serve or somebody like that would have to serve. But if a private entity comes in and rents the place, then they would have to get their own permit if they're going to be in charge of alcohol.
They'd have to have their own permit to serve alcohol on the premises?
Yes.
But otherwise?
Depends on what type of event it is.
But otherwise, the Historical Society would have its ongoing permit.
Yes.
But in the way this is proposed, and I wouldn't recommend it, but it says the historic area around the depot, so that would mean any organization could potentially come in with permission to use the town's property and use it for an event that had alcohol. Is that correct? It's not, this isn't specifically worded for the Garner Historical Society to have alcohol-serving events. And I'm not saying it should be, but this is kind of, I guess I'm wondering, is it worth changing the town ordinance to make it happen, or is there another way to make it happen on an event basis or an organizational basis? Because you're changing the town ordinance to say that that whole area around there can be used, and I don't know if that's really the intent of what we're trying to do.
No, it was just allow the Garner Area Historic Society, I mean, the depot has a limited amount of square footage, so it was just allow them to have the beer and wine on the outside of the building, but.
I mean, and I guess that's my point, is the policy in the ordinance shouldn't be crafted specifically for one organization. It could be specified for, and again, that's what I'm trying to.
It's possible, there could be a downtown event.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to say, are we trying to invite the opportunity?
But I would think they would be a part of that discussion, so.
I didn't know whether council members have, because you're really designating a physical part of the town where you could have alcohol served in accordance with ABC permitting. And again, I'm not the expert to know what, how that transfers from an entity to a location to an event, who issues temporary. So I guess anytime you're touching ordinance, you're touching sort of the core laws of the town, so.
I think we just want to make sure the town or either the Garner Area Historical Society has control over who is serving alcohol, so it's not meant to open the property up to anyone.
Well, what Mr. Dellinger is saying, he's correct, he doesn't say that. It just says in and around the depot, it doesn't say it's limited to them. It needs to say in here, specify, the specified area, community events approved by the town of Garner. So that specific event's been approved by the town of Garner, will be allowed to do it, and it says which have been approved by a town council resolution, where the applicant has specific, excuse me, has specified such area and such beverages. So he's correct, it doesn't say that in this ordinance, it just says in and around that area. So it needs to say that in and around the Garner area approved by the town of Garner for a specific group or groups. I mean, it doesn't say that, and he's right, it says in and around the depot. I mean, we could rather have a couple coolers and light on, it's very clean, and we could sell beer at the corner. I mean, basically, that's what you're, what it says. It doesn't say that you can't do that.
Right.
That's what it needs to say, that you can't do that.
And I guess I'm wondering, too, if the language that exists before already, where it says malt beverages and/or unfortified wine is permitted within a specified area at community events which have been approved by town council resolution, where the applicant has specified such area and such beverages in the application and has all required ABC permits. It would seem that the ordinance already covers that opportunity if they were to come to the town and say, we want to have a fundraising event, we'd be in a position to issue that permit or issue that resolution and allow them to have that event. I'm concerned with having sort of in perpetuity, we already have language that would allow them to do it if they had the permitting, they just have to come to council and say, yes, we can have your event.
I don't think they want to have to come to town council every time they have an event that has alcohol, is that?
I could understand why you wouldn't, I wouldn't either, but I don't think that the way, I don't think changing the town ordinance is the way to do it. I think you want to incorporate that into the contract that we have with them.
What I'll do is I'll work with the town attorney on the best way to get to the intent of what we're trying to do here, whether it's by resolution or some other wording here.
I think it's better done in the contract, because you don't want to change the town ordinance just to accommodate one organization. I think in the contract, you could have language that would say they could have a certain number of events, serving alcohol with the proper permitting per year, or any language, or however many unlimited number, but I think it's better placed to put it than in the ordinance.
Okay, I'll just have to make sure that's consistent with the way the ordinance reads now. Okay.
But the ordinance would have to clarify the area, because we allow it, the ordinance allows it at the auditorium, and they can get a special permit, of course, for the rodeo. So I'll let the attorneys just decide what the language needs to say, if it needs to be tweaked. Mr. Dellinger's got a good point, but, I mean, the ordinance, the consumption of alcoholic beverages in the town has to be in the ordinance. You're either allowed to do it or you're not allowed to do it if it's at a town event. So the ordinance is going to have to have some of the language in there, and he can specify it in the contract also. Because they're the organization running that, where at the G-PAC, it's town employees, town staff, and that's a little different animal.
Do they have any questions? Charles, again?
I think they're spelled out by resolution, and I don't know if John may be able to answer it.
There is a resolution that allows events including alcohol to be held at certain areas like the downtown district. So way back, we had a two-block area that we would use for those type of events. The current events that are being done hosted by DGA, the actual supplier that is selling the alcohol has the permit. So currently, DGA uses the resolution that was done that allows the sale in that area. DGA does not have to go and get any permitting because they don't need it. When we had the concert series on the back lawn of the G-PAC in the past, the facility was amended in the ordinance to allow alcohol to be in and on the grounds of the G-PAC, DGA had to go and get a permit to sell the alcohol for every event that it did, not from the town, but from the ABC commission. So if it's a sale of alcohol, it's slightly different. If the Historical Society or anyone else is not planning to sell alcohol but provide it as part of an event, and there's not a fee for it, there's some rules with ABC in which you don't have to have a specific permit if you're under certain quantities and thresholds, and I don't have, I don't know the current numbers. But in theory, if there is a resolution or change in the ordinance that allowed it at that site, then the Historical Society or anyone else that might be hosting an event there would then have to comply with ABC permit rules.
Did you want to, yeah, come, yeah.
Of course. But what Gray is saying, and I'm pretty sure he's right about this, the ordinance is allowing the alcohol to be served at the building, because you can't have alcohol in any town facilities. So the town adopted the ordinance to allow it at G-PAC, and I think we, you know, what Rodney is recommending is we just writing on the coattails of the regulations required by G-PAC would apply to the Historical Society. Most of DGA's events, other than what John was referring to, are not on town property. So I think the key is we're looking at allowing it on town property.
Yeah, I think.
And of course, it would be included in the agreement as well. Does that help?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that the Garner Area Historic, I mean, the G-PAC is a town-owned facility, so that may be treated different than when we allow outside groups like the Downtown Garner Association. So I think we want to treat use more similar to the Downtown Garner Association.
From what Mr. Hodges was saying, we could pass kind of a larger resolution in conjunction with the contract that would accomplish the same thing without changing the ordinance. So that we could pass a resolution, that's my understanding.
Okay, we're not, we will be the only ones in the facility serving alcohol. What I'm seeing in the ordinance is that it's being adopted to allow alcohol in the building is the reason for the ordinance change.
Well, in and around the building, because it may spill outside.
On the deck.
But I think I'm, I think I'm, understand what we're trying to get to here. I mean, the Historical Society wants to be able to serve beer and wine for special events, regardless of what the purpose may be, in and around the depot, and I'll work with the town attorney on the best way to do that, so it just basically covers them and/or any other permissions that the town would give. And that would be likely by resolution and be included in the contract.
Yeah, I think if you work that out with the attorney and what language you bring back, then we'll have his, I guess, stamp of approval in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
If he comes back and says it needs to be the ordinance, well, then it needs to be.
Yeah, and I did run this by him before, but he didn't have maybe the full context and the history of how it was treated in other places and those things, so I'll talk with him about that again, and we'll figure out a way to get that.
Okay, any other final comments?
I think what I'm hearing, though, nobody has any objection to it, it's just a matter of how we codify it, that's the biggest thing, so.
I think so.
All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I'm ready to move to item three on our agenda, animal control ordinance, and interim chief Benz is here, I believe, who will provide us with information at this time. All of you should have received a memo, I think, that he will be speaking to tonight, I'm sure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Marsh, and I appreciate the opportunity to come for you. And I do apologize to start with, the memo should have been sent out originally so that it was a little more clear on the changes we were requesting. Certainly, there's going to be some discussion on some things. We know that animal control orders tend to be very specific and have, bring a lot of dialogue, so we're looking forward to that. So as you see before you, we made some recommendations for some changes to the animal control ordinance. These changes really came out of two specific incidences that we realized that we had some shortcomings, and Mr. Marsh, and you were part of one of those here recently. I can start with the nuisance animal piece of that, I guess it's the second part of the memorandum that I sent. We actually combined 314 and 315 of the animal control ordinance that had to do with both at-large as well as nuisance animals, and created one, one specific section under which we called prohibited acts, and that was at the direction or suggestion of our town attorney, interim attorney. So we combined some of those different sections under the heading prohibited actions. The new heading includes all the same violations of the old ordinance without the penalty of seizure, since that no longer is an option under Wake County Animal Shelter. We learned after this incident that we were dealing with that the Wake County Animal Shelter no longer allows for seizure and holding of an animal beyond the five-day period. They'll release the dog to the owner, so that applies particularly to the at-large or any animals we seize for any particular violation. They will only hold the dog up to five days, and if there's an identified owner, then that animal will be released to the owner upon payment of the fees for the shelter. Second piece of that is, it defines the number of times in a time period, 90 days, in which violations can occur before the animal is declared a nuisance. And we determined this because we found, particularly in that one situation, that sometime, approximately six months had passed since the last violation, and we were kind of forced into a position where we were going to try to seize the animal, and that's where all this other piece came from, try to seize that animal and couldn't do that. So we realized that what really pertains, what is really a definition of a nuisance animal, when does it, at some point, does it become a nuisance? And so I've looked at several different options and several different ordinances between Raleigh and some other localities, and this seemed to be a very common thread of some time specific to the time periods between violations. It was something, that way you're not charging, they have a violation six years ago and then have a violation today, and those two together can, amount to a nuisance. Well, that dog's not really a nuisance, because the last incident happened almost six years ago, but we don't compound any time looking at that. The ordinance, if you go back to the, again, that's the nuisance piece of that, do you want to ask questions about those individual sections first before we move on to the next section, or how do you want to process this?
What's your desire, counsel? Do you want to have an opportunity with questions now?
Because really, the two main sections are the dangerous animal and the nuisance piece with some other bias.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, on this page, chief, it says, in another situation involving a neighbor dispute, we identified our nuisance in that large ordinance were unenforceable beyond civil fines because the Wake County Animal Shelter does not allow us to seize and hold nuisance animals. They will only hold animals that have been found to be neglected, abused, or dangerous. They will only hold, and that large dog, and if the owner picks up and pays the fee, this revised ordinance does the following. So you mentioned something about five days with Wake County.
That is their policy, they'll hold the animal for up to five days, and if it's not reclaimed within five days, then they decide what they do with it at that point, and that's their policy.
Okay, because you said something in an email, we got an email back from some residents, and I was reading it about, we can pick up a nuisance dog, and they can stay there at the Wake County Animal Shelter up to five days, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, because it is up to five days, does that need to be in their ordinance, and anyone who reads the ordinance would understand that? And that the animal's not going to be picked up, you know, and can be there for weeks, weeks on end, or they know that if no one picks the dog up to five days, the Wake County Animal Shelter's going to do something with it, whatever that may be?
We can certainly.
I'm just trying to clarify, because it says you can put it there, and you told us the five days, but I'm trying to find it in here, just so it's clarified to everyone that reads the ordinance and knows what current Wake County Animal Shelter policy is, which currently is five days.
I just hated to put their policy into our ordinance, because any time it's their policy, their policy could change at any time, so if we put that in there, then we'd have to change our ordinance every time they change their policy.
Well, could we put in there whatever the, whatever the current Wake County Animal Shelter policy is at the time the animal's picked up?
We could certainly do that.
Because that way, someone can say, well, I got Wake County in five days.
Absolutely.
And if it changes, I agree, I agree, chip in the number of days, you're right, but should we specify whatever the current existing Wake County Animal Shelter policy is? Because I believe the concern of what I read in one of the emails was that we're not going to pick up animals, but you just clearly stated that, yes, we can pick up animals and will, and the shelter will hold them up to five days.
That's great.
That's clear, okay.
Yes, sir, we'll add that in there. And it also, because of the fact that we can't seize the animal ultimately anymore, because the animal shelter has come to the conclusion that they want to save animals, they don't want to euthanize animals, so that's their goal, so they don't want to hold on to animals because they don't have the space. So that's one of their motivators for that. We also always have in the back, and I've confirmed this with our district attorney, Lauren Freeman, that we can always charge these ordinances as a criminal offense and then seize an animal based on a criminal offense, just like we do a dangerous dog. We can seize a dangerous dog based on a criminal offense, as well as the, as well as the ordinance allows us to do that, but we have both ways to go on that path if something really happens. And just to be honest about this whole situation, in 20 years, we've never had, this is the first time, this last instance was the first time I know of that we've ever had to try to seize an animal for a nuisance violation, because that just doesn't happen. Most people are very proactive with their animals and try to, try to, we may have to find them several times, but once those fines start adding up, people gets people's attention really quickly.
All right, thank you.
Can we expand on that nuisance? I'm reading through all of this stuff, and it's, there's so much to pull out. When we say a nuisance, well, you know, a lot of it is self-explanatory, you know, a dangerous animal that could bite, can you expand on?
Nuisance is not a dangerous animal, those are two different sections.
Okay.
So under 315, we combined everything into prohibited actions. So those prohibited actions are the same as what's in the old ordinance, and they include animals that disturb, interfere, or annoy humans, or other animals while not in the mode of attack, animals that turn over garbage cans, or damage gardens, flowers, or vegetation, female animals that are not confined, that are in female animals that are not confined, that are in a secure enclosure during, and then allowing any dog to leave the feces or public streets, sidewalks, those things are still also nuisance violations. And then maintaining animal that barks, whines, howls, excessive, continuous, untimely fashion makes or, or makes other noises to bother neighbors, so that's still in there. And again, so at that point, we can, we can, within those ninety-day period, if we have that many violations, then at that point, we will declare that dog a nuisance, and then we'll start the fines at that point. And every time we get a complaint within that time period, we'll address that with additional, additional cost.
So I guess, to make it simple, I like the way Gray puts that for everybody thoroughly understands it, that if somebody lives next to somebody and they've got a big dog, and it's tied up in the backyard there or on a Porsche, and every time they come out on their deck, it's barking and barking and barking, and nobody wants to do anything about it so they can't have any peace and quiet. So if that's called in, that's considered nuisance number one, or?
It's a violation. That's correct. We go out, and as per policy that we've been doing, is we've been trying to, again, the whole point of ordinances, particularly with the animal control ordinances, is to get people to abide by those ordinances and be good neighbors. So that's the whole point of it. So we have, we have continually given one or two warnings, verbal warnings, and then a written warning, and then we cite. So this is kind of in line with what we have been doing for the last several years, is just trying to get that, get that compliance, working with people, trying, you know, if their dog gets out a couple of times, we're trying to figure out, help them, make sure they keep their dog secure and not bothering their neighbors and that kind of thing. So it really follows in line with that. So yes, to your point, that would be a nuisance after the third call. We would then start citing no more warnings. We would start citing that owner with that violation. And there's a piece in here about tethering, but certainly tethering more than, more than, or right now tethering is legally by ordinance, by ordinance anyway. So they're not allowed to tether their animal at all. So we've been dealing with a couple of those here recently, too.
Okay.
Even to the back porch.
It's a tough thing. I remember years ago when we had to deal with some issues up here, and this, we had, that was the old place, and that place was packed, and.
The Claverdale incident.
Oh, yeah, that was it. And I come to conclusion, you, you know, a man could get in a fight with his wife and hurt her real bad, and everything'd be okay, but if you tried to get his dog, man, the war was on.
It's like that.
It was a long night that night we dealt with that issue. And I know Gray remembers it well.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, it was. And so, so if we can get it right and deal with it, the biggest problem, I think, we're seeing, as we're growing in neighborhoods and, and, you know, people can have pets. I have nothing wrong with pets. I got two cats, so they stay on the inside. But if you, if you've got an apartment and you've got two German police dogs in there, you're not treating them fair, keeping them locked up, and they're going to bark and bark and bark, and every time they hear a noise, it's just, it's just a natural tendency. But everybody else has got a right to live in peace and quiet, too. So it's a catch-22 sometimes, but, you know, we've got to do what we've got to do, and let's get this thing right every, every, however we do it, so.
Let me get some others if they have questions or comments. Thank you, Phil. Any down on this end, questions, comments? Mr. Town Manager, yeah?
So I'm seeing the consolidation of 314 and 315. What I'm seeing in the existing ordinance is a much longer list of nuisance behaviors, and also included in there delineating, it has to be two occasions of something for it to be an issue. And there's some fairly specific things in here, but most of these are, it takes two for it to actually be considered a nuisance. In the new, what's being proposed, I see a much shorter, shorter list of items, but also seem, ones that seem very specific. So over here, and what's, what we have now is maintain an animal that on more than two occasions damages or interferes with private property. But over here, there's animals that tip over garbage containers or damages gardens or flowers or vegetables, but doesn't actually mention any other damage to private property. And so now the neighbor's dog jumps on my car and scratches it.
It's a violation of being off its property at that point, so it's covered under something else.
But the damage.
It's still under, it's still under ordinance, or still a violation of the ordinance of animal control of nuisance because it's off its property.
So, and has the attorney looked over all this already?
Yes, sir. He reviewed that.
Because I have a question, and I'm curious as to what this means. In section 315A, "It shall be unlawful for any person to own, keep, possess, or maintain an animal in such a manner or to permit an animal to run at large." I don't understand that sentence. It doesn't make any sense. That's why I don't understand it.
I think that language is pulled from another, even, I have to go back and look at my notes, but either he suggested that language, or that was pulled from another ordinance and he okayed it. So I don't, not exactly sure. I had to look at my notes on that.
I mean, and there's one other issue that kind of jumped out at me, that kind of puts me in the position of this needs to go back and have more work done on it, and that is a language around tethering. And where are my notes? So in the memo, their current ordinance doesn't allow any tethering, and currently it allows, it doesn't allow any, it allows attended tethering under, where is it? I don't find it.
There's the recommendation to allow attended tethering up to three hours, but currently we don't have any, allow any tethering.
Okay, here it is. Under section 311, cruelty to animals, E, "It shall be unlawful to tether, fasten, chain, or tie or restrain an unattended dog to any tree, fence, post, doghouse, or any other object provided, however," and then there's some grandfathering language. F says, "Attended tethering shall be permitted if the owner or other responsible person is outside with the dog. Tethering of attended dogs shall be on a device of at least ten feet long with a harness, collar, or other device commensurate with the size of the dog." So one, we don't allow tethering. So at some point in 2011, I guess, we decided that tethering was cruel and unusual to animals, so we didn't allow it. We did allow attended tethering if there's a responsible person out there, but in this revision, I'm seeing that we're now allowing three hours, may not exceed three hours in continuous duration within a three-hour period. So I have two questions. One is why are we allowing tethering again? And two is, who's going to monitor whether it's three continuous hours, when somebody could then say, well, two and a half hours, and then I let him off and put him back on for two and a half, and took him off and put him, let him, and then who's going to, how do you manage that in, from an ordinance standpoint? So those are the two questions. Why are we allowing tethering again? And how do we, if we are, how is that enforceable?
So we're allowing tethering because we found that a lot of people like to sit out on their back deck with their dog and tie their dog up to the deck. So that's why we're allowing, under the other ordinance that was not allowed, that may be a misprint in this old ordinance that was sent. I don't recall.
I pulled it off of the online version of section F. There, we have an attended tethering ordinance where people are allowed to sit out there with their dog on a tether.
Okay.
So that's why I'm wondering why we're including other language and another section to increase unattended tethering.
Okay, that would be my fault, because I did not see that in that part of that section for some reason. I guess it was missed when we were redoing everything. But the goal is to allow attended tethering for up to three hours, and go ahead, Mr. Dickerson.
I remember somewhat when we had this discussion many years ago, and one reason we put the attendant tethering in there, because if someone is walking their dog in the park and they have to go to the restroom, that allows you to tie your dog up temporarily, go to the restroom, come back out. So that's why we put, I believe we put a provision about attendant tethering, because there's going to be times when you might need to leave your dog for momentarily, but not extended.
Or out in your yard, you're doing yard work, and you want to be out in the front yard. I guess my point is, with those, just those two examples, I don't, I don't have a lot of confidence that, that, there's a lot of changes made. There are four different sections, seven sections, that are having changes in here from assistant town manager now being allowed to do something to some other mixture. I think it's not clear what changes are being made and why, because you're now, in just the two examples, there's a sentence that just completely doesn't make any sense. And then there's also, there's also this tethering issue, which again, was already allowed in our ordinance. So I'm, looking too far into other stuff, I'm not sure it's covered. Sorry, Mr. Dickerson.
Yeah, the sentence that doesn't make any sense, I think, a typo, the, if you look under the old section 315A, it says, "in such a manner so as to constitute a nuisance or to permit an animal to run at large." So the, to constitute a nuisance got missed after manner.
Yeah. And that's why, again, my recommendation is to send it back, work on it some more. I'm willing to sit here all night and figure it out. I doubt the rest of the council is willing to do that.
Well, I would just say, this, 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 this matter has been given considerable attention. I've been in several meetings where this has been discussed, and Mr. Benz's department has been in, in some recent circumstance where some, some problems as it relates to interpretation, I guess, of the meaning of the ordinance was, was brought to our attention and was used as an excuse to suggest that the police department was not, was not attending to this ordinance as well as it should. And, and so, I'm not suggesting that it, it might need some further refinement, but it, and obviously, it goes back to the time before our previous attorney left. There were some efforts being made at that time, I believe, to refine the ordinance, and then after he left, the matter just sort of lingered for a while. And so, as a result of some recent incidences, it's come back to, to light. And, and as I said, I know Mr. Benz has spent some considerable time on that, but if, Mr. Benz, is that something, I guess, we can get back with Fred on, or, or just you and Mr. Gale and others?
Yeah, I ran it through everybody, trying to make sure we didn't have any of these typos. I apologize for those and some of those errors. I didn't really look at too much into the cruelty and the pieces that we highlighted with mostly the pieces that we touched. So I just missed that part, so I apologize for that. I would like some.
There's a lot of, there are a lot of changes, and, I mean, don't apologize, there are a lot of changes. I could see how something would, you know, slip through on multiple versions. It happens all the time when you're trying to change a lot of text.
Well, I'd like, though, before I do, is at least to have some feedback on the confinement and control of dangerous animals portion of that. So if we need to make any changes to that section, just as philosophical as far as what we're doing, because that, that is a change, mostly in the fact that we're now requiring a permit for the animal to turn it, turn back to the home, that there's a difference between an inside and an outside animal. So an inside animal in an apartment, certainly the person can't construct an outside secure facility for their dog. So we want, as long as philosophically, the board is fine with that piece of it, we'll go back and make sure that's like it should be, but if any feedback or anything on any specific pieces of the dangerous dog piece of that.
What section is that in, Joe?
Sir, that's 317, confinement and control of dangerous animals.
Okay.
I didn't have nearly as many issues, because I saw what your, I saw the issues, and I saw them resolved in a way different than what's, what we have. That part, I didn't have as much concern with.
And we had to go back and put in the, the other piece under prohibited actions as well, talking about the, the policy of the county, of the board, of the shelter, I mean. So we have some other things to add back to it.
Okay, any other council members want to weigh in on this matter?
That, that part, the confinement, 317, that's, that's the page one of the memo that we got, and, excuse me, he's explained it in, and he also has explained it here, specifying these. You have the eight, you gave us the crib note, crib notes version of here, the eight specific changes, but a lot of it deals with the fact that someone's got a dangerous animal that, in this case, I reckon in an apartment, where you can go through the steps now to deem it a dangerous animal. And the steps are clearly laid out. I mean, it's much longer here than what you got highlighted in the ordinance, but it's clearly lays out to give the police the authority to seize an animal, microchip it, and do whatever else needs to be done, along with getting a permit for that owner to get the pet back.
That's correct. Once they have all those things in place.
But there's a lot more teeth in this ordinance than there was previously, and it's a lot more specific.
Right.
Okay. In this part of it.
Okay, anybody else on the confinement and control?
I just want to agree with that. That part is the tightest of the changes.
Joe, you want to move?
It's fine. We'll take this back and look at it and revise it, make sure it's all tight like you want it, and revise, look at that nuisance piece of it again, and make sure that wording is correct, and then we'll bring it back before you. And that point should be.
I guess my question on the nuisance, what was the impetus for that, those changes at that level with regards to what's happening? Like, or seeing, you're seeing regularly that caused you to?
The biggest, well, a lot of the verbiage in the old ordinance under nuisance had to do with seizing the animal and what to do with the animal after how many days and those kinds of things, and without the ability to seize and hold the animal at the Wake County Animal Shelter, it really negated all that. So we tried to just to condense, I was a page and a half, into something more just specific, and these are the things that we see. And just to your point earlier, if, if the dog gets off the property and destroys somebody's property, then it's, we got them on like two different ordinance pieces of it. So it's covered under a lot of different, kind of, they kind of flow together. So if they're off their property and using the bathroom, say, at a center island on some street, they're still, they're still off their property, and so they're violating the two ordinance there. So it kind of gets them all around.
Okay, yes, Mr. Town Manager.
And I would say that the tricky part about an animal, or ordinance like this, is we tend to think in terms of dogs and cats, but this could cover other type of animals, too. You know, somebody has a pet rabbit that's going onto somebody else's property or whatever, or.
Or a pit.
Or birds, you know, making noise or whatever.
Or a dangerous snake.
Well, snake also, yeah. And so, you know, we're trying to encompass all those different things, but mainly dogs and cats, but it also has to be able to apply to other things, too.
Very true. In fact, we've had a recent case having to do with fowl chickens or whatever, yeah. We think mainly of, of the carnivores, the cats and dogs, but it does encompass other, other creatures as well.
They're rare, but, but much more with dogs and cats.
Yeah. Okay, well, counsel, anybody else want to weigh in? If not, Joe has promised to sort of revamp, revise a little bit, and bring it back to us, Joe?
Yes, sir.
And hopefully, we can reach a consensus on sort of getting this in its final version and putting it to rest.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a brief recess for about five minutes, maybe, and we will resume after that. Okay?
We committed to you that it would run through June 30th, which is obviously today. We have been provided with guidance from Wake County that through the CARES Act, we will, we should. that through the CARES Act, we will, we should be able to receive reimbursement for up to 75% of the cost for the COVID-19 pay. And so I am here this evening just to confirm with each of you that continuing our COVID-19 pay for the eligible firefighters and police officers is at your pleasure. A reminder, just in terms of total costs, total costs are roughly about $27,000 a month. That is the total cost. And then our anticipation is that we will be reimbursed at 75% of that $27,000 cost per month. Not recommending any changes to eligibility, not recommending any changes to the amount of COVID-19 pay that is provided. Just want to make sure that there isn't any questions and that everyone is in concurrence with continuing this program. I will also say that we're committed to coming back to you in the September timeframe to re-review this situation again. However, you do have the discretion at any time that you feel it's appropriate to end this program. We have also tied it to the Wake County Emergency Operations Center. So if at some point that would be ended by Wake County, then that would also bring the COVID-19 pay program to an end as well.
And I'm seeing here, I guess, the estimated amount for the town's share is like $7,500 a month. Am I right on that?
I'm not good at doing math in my head.
That's correct. And that includes benefits. We went back and checked the numbers. And we had to adjust the amount based on the actions that were taken during the budget. So we adjusted the amount for that and also to include benefits.
So I think we're asking the council basically to just continue the hazard pay beyond June 30. And you'll bring back some more recommendation as we move ahead and look to, I guess, terminate this consistent with, by Wake County and the closing of the.
Emergency Operations Center. But you also do have at your discretion at any time to modify or change the program as well. But we have tied it to be consistent with the Wake EOC.
All right. I guess we probably ought to formally vote on this.
Yes, we will need action on this item because it does expire tonight. So we want to make sure we continue that.
Exactly. Okay. Questions or to entertain a motion from someone on the council?
I believe that we continue the hazard pay for our police and fire beyond the June 30 established date.
And seconded, any question or comments, any member? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And it is so ordered. So thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you.
One question. Was there any reimbursements going retroactive from the CARES Act for reimbursement for that expenditure already?
I believe so. I believe the reimbursement will be for the entire program. We just didn't have that guidance when we began it back in April.
That's great. Thank you.
Actually, when we started the program, I think we started it in May and it was retroactive back to April 16. So we are able to apply any expenses from April 16 forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is the last, excuse me, the last regular agenda item. And I recognize Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Roy Lance, who will lead us through a discussion as it relates to our says for town attorney.
All right. Thank you very much. Just a quick reset for you all. The last time this issue was before you was back in March of this year. And at that time, what we were doing was reporting back the work of the, or the, sort of the preliminary discussions that the mayor and Mrs. Behringer and Mr. Dickerson and I had had, sort of forming an ad hoc group to figure out how we might approach this. And at that time, we talked to you all about the pros and cons of an in-house staff member fulfilling this function versus continuing to contract and the workload and the pros and cons of both. And you all were in agreement that it made sense to move forward with an in-house town attorney. That was a staff position rather than a contractor. That was about the time that COVID-19 came and just a million other things were going on and the budget. And we decided it made sense to pause the process. And we thought we would potentially get a better applicant pool if we waited a little bit of that out. And we now have settled into a little bit more of a routine. And I feel like, you know, you can only wait but so long. And we'd be in a better position now if we could restart things. And so the first, one of the first things that we need to do is to create a position because one didn't exist before. We didn't need it before because we contracted for that service. And so at some point, potentially, if this is acceptable to you all or close and we can make some minor changes, we would put something on the July 7th or some other agenda for you all to approve formally. Tonight, what I want to do is just briefly go over with you all what the job description would look like for that town attorney position that we're proposing to create. And then walk through the, at a real high level, the timeline and sort of the steps in the process and see if there's some, that doesn't necessarily require formal approval. But since we're already talking about it, it's a good opportunity to check in about the process that we would use to go through this. So I'm going to hit those two things. And if you've got any other questions, we can answer those. BD Suckler is also here and he can help as well. So I thought I would start off with the job description portion of the conversation. And this, this is straight from the document that's in your, in your agenda packet. I just pulled a few of the bullet points out just for the benefit of people that were watching at home or wanted to see it on the screen. You know, basically, the duties are pretty typical and it's written to be relatively broad to cover a lot of different things that could come up. But, you know, oftentimes the duties of the attorney would be things like dealing with contracts, you know, researching and drafting ordinances that you all would eventually take action on and pass, real estate transactions and helping us with those. A lot of interpreting of, you know, policies, rules, regulations, statutes, that kind of thing. Attending your council meetings and advising you all on things like conflicts of interest, meeting procedures, legal issues and questions that might come up during the meeting or need follow-up as a result of something that happened during the meeting. And, you know, in some cases, representing the town in litigation, if there was any courtroom work that was needed. Many other things as well, but that's sort of the high level description. And then, you know, we would require that the person have a law degree and be licensed to practice law in the state of North Carolina and have considerable legal experience, preferably in a local government setting. And we deliberately left that somewhat open. You know, I think we're envisioning that we might attract a candidate that has a significant amount of experience. But we might also attract a person earlier in their career that certainly has enough experience to be helpful to us. But there, we could conceivably attract someone, you know, sort of a range of different candidates and wanted to make sure that we left that possibility open for council to consider. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or comments about the job description.
Counsel, any, I mean, it's all laid out there. Any questions or comments at this point?
Hearing none.
Okay. I thought just to give you a general sense for how we were envisioning the rest of the process from here, it would be helpful to walk through a rough timeline and steps. So this, you know, we start off, you know, tonight, getting some discussion about the job description just to see if there are any changes that we need to make. I'm not hearing any. There are a couple of minor changes that we've discussed that will internally, some little edits that we would, we'll go ahead and make. But the job description will move forward substantially the same with those other minor changes that, a couple of other things we just noticed internally and have been brought to our attention. Put that on the agenda to approve formally at your next meeting on the 7th. And from there, we'll use Rick's talents to help us create a brochure, which we sometimes do, you know, just a more elaborate recruitment piece that we do for some high-profile positions. And this is certainly one of those. And then we'll post the job, probably leave it open a minimum of three weeks. All of these dates are rough, so we'll have to see, you know, how things progress as we go. And we could certainly leave it open longer if we needed to. But this is not going to be, you know, leave it open for a week or two kind of thing. We're going to try to attract, you know, as good a candidate pool as we can. And we think that extra time is probably needed. Then we go through the process of screening the applications. And then the working group, the same group that has been working on this so far with the addition of Fred and with some support from HR, obviously, as you can see, looking at the applicants and sort of narrowing down the list and also continuing to use Fred's valuable experience. The smaller group would conduct initial interviews. That's what we're proposing. That just, the logistics of that would probably be a little bit easier. And then that group could narrow it down to not a specific number, but you know, some, wherever there seems to be a natural break in terms of finalists. And then bring those finalists to interview with the full council so that you all have some ability to help choose who that person is. That work could be done in a closed session and, you know, perhaps, you know, early, like prior to the start of one of your regular meetings so that you would already be here on that day. But it could be anytime you all want to schedule. And then, of course, you all would, you know, have the ability to make your decision about who you'd like to make an offer to. And then we proceed with trying to negotiate with that person. And we, I think the earliest that could happen, that we could be, you know, have a person here sitting in this chair in this new position is probably mid-October. We're trying to be sensitive to Fred's timeline. And he's been with us for a long time in an interim capacity. And I think he's been wonderful and is happy to do that. But there's, you know, there's a point in time where we need to go ahead and find a permanent position. So we want to make sure that we go through a thorough enough process, but fast enough to try to, just, you know, to move it along. And I, we'll see. But I think mid to late October, you know, I don't want to overpromise, but I think that's, I don't think it would be much sooner than that. But hopefully we can stick to a schedule that looks pretty much like that.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And I would just observe that, yeah, these timeframes are, one might argue, sort of tight. But we believe that we ought to stick to that as closely as possible, both in consideration of Mr. Baggett's work with us and his need to wrap things up. And so if we can stick to this timeline, that'll be good for him as well, I think. But counsel, you've seen the position description and the proposed task and timelines. Questions or comments at this point? I'll start with Mr. Singleson if he has it.
Yes, sir. Not at this time.
Behringer? Okay.
I like having this timeline here. And just from outside looking in, it looks good. And I agree, as quickly as we can bring our new full-time attorney onboard, especially with what all we've got coming in growth and different things, it'll be a plus for us. So I do like this aggressive timeline. And like the mayor said, if we can stick to it and if it moves it up any, that'll be great. COVID.
Mr. Vance?
No comment.
Hey. Counsel, Mr. Roy Lance?
No, that was, I just wanted to make sure we got any feedback from you all, which I think we've done. And so the next time you'll see this will be on the July 7th agenda. May put it on consent if, or we could have it on the regular agenda if you want. But we just need the formal action of approving the creation of the position. And from there, we'll start moving down the process like you've seen tonight. So thank you very much for the input.
About prejudging this, I think we would anticipate probably bringing at least three candidates to the entire council. Something, some number similar to that.
Yeah, I think that.
That's what we're shooting for.
Sometimes in these processes, my experience has been there's a sort of a natural breakpoint. And, you know, it might be two, it might be four. You know, we don't necessarily want to have, you know, nine people in here interviewing because that's going to be very time-consuming. But we want to make sure that you all feel like you have several strong candidates to choose from.
Okay, thank you very much and for your good work and for the committee that's been pretty busy working. Very good job of leading us to the point where we are now. So thank you, sir. Okay, let me see. Is that our last item? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to manager reports at this time.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. All right. We will go then to council reports. And I'll start down on this end with Mr. Vance.
I would just like to say one thing. I appreciate the responsiveness to the public works for a concern that was on one of the streets that they jumped on within a short period of time and took care of it. And the residents are really pleased. And just please let the public works know that they are appreciated in the work they did in such an expeditious manner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Work our way around. Mr. Dellinger?
A few things. One, earlier in the year when COVID-19 was coming down and wasn't as bad as it is now, we took a lot of measures, I think, that were very prudent with regards to meetings and protecting folks. And so my question is, with the state we're in presently, where there are more recorded cases and the numbers continuing to rise in North Carolina, Wake County specifically, what is the, I like coming in here. I love being in here and meeting. It's always my preference. And I know it makes a lot of things easier. But the reality is it's much more dangerous now than it ever was before in this pandemic, particularly in Garner. I think we were, missed the first little wave. But I think now we're clearly in the mix of it. We are in a pattern of doubling our number of confirmed cases every two weeks. Two weeks ago, I handed out information to council that we had 149 cases. As of this past weekend, we had over 300. So there's a very steady trajectory. And we've had 80 cases both in the past two weeks, back to back. That's different than, that's more cases in last week than we had in all of May in Garner. So my point and question is, what is our, what are our plans with regards to our meetings with council? I know we have public hearings coming up and it presents its own set of challenges. And we need, everyone needs those opportunities. But I don't think that it's prudent for us to continue to meet in person. And definitely not prudent to hold public hearings in person. And so my question to staff and I guess council is what their position is on that.
Okay. At this point, we can. I would just observe that obviously our setup here has been designed to acknowledge the concern and dangers as it relates to COVID-19. And of course, our setup here tonight is an element of that. I had suggested, I guess, back when we had our first in-person meeting, that I would prefer we go to that if at all possible. But we would still have the option of a council member to connect virtually if that was their choice. I think as it relates to upcoming hearings, Mr. Baggett's not here, but somebody clarify for me regarding, certainly, I think, to have quasi-judicial hearings, it requires a certain number of people being present in person. Is that at least a quorum of the council in person? Am I right on that?
Yes.
Yes, I think the other thing is to have the witnesses here or the testimony in person also.
Okay, and so?
That would require the applicant and their team of.
Then there are just other public hearings that aren't the quasi-judicial. And making sure that the public has access to make the comments in a way that's representative of.
of a normal opportunity to attend a public hearing. Again, I'm not saying I have an answer to this, and it's a lot of challenges, but I think, well, if we all remember back, things changed so quickly in those few weeks when COVID came through, that a decision you made one day, two days later was obsolete. And I think council meetings are very similar. The situation sort of changed where I think there was a period of time in May where it looked like this was prudent, but I think the numbers are going in a different direction. So.
Okay, I'll be happy to hear from other council members regarding the concern mentioned by Mr. Dellinger.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Like my colleague, I do understand the seriousness, but however, I think we've done the most effective job here in our spacing, and everybody's got masks in, everybody's doing the three Ws, whatever it is that the governor wants, and, but even with some of our big hearings, we've managed to do things with overflow if necessary. And I agree, I prefer to have these meetings in person like this. We get a lot more done, and we just stay aware of what we're doing and stay focused, just like we're doing here. I think we're going to be fine because, you know, life is going on and business is going on, and we, as elected officials, we've got a job to do, but I think we can do it very safely and very effectively. And if it gets totally, totally in a serious, worse situation, you know, we can always back up and do what we need to do. But just speaking for me, I'd rather continue like we're doing. I think it's effective for us, it's effective for the staff and those people coming in so we can go about doing our business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
I agree with Mr. Matthews. I think we're six foot, we've got masks on. It says clearly on the door, if someone's coming in here, they have to wear a cloth mask. And based off the last public hearing we had in regards to the situation, when we had the folks from Hillwind here and also from Hunter's Mark and other neighbors on Jones' Otters Road, I think it was handled well. And you've got the spacing in here. I mean, we're set up a whole lot better at restaurants who were at 50% capacity. I mean, you can have four people sitting at a table, and they could be founding members, but, I mean, we're spaced out pretty well. So I think the town has done a good job. And Mr. Dellinger is correct, the numbers have gone up. Of course, the number of testing also has gone up, so some won't run together, but the percentages are staying pretty much, are staying pretty similar. So anyway, it's, I think what we're doing is fine. I do believe we got some notice about the public hearings coming up July 7th. There's two. One may be a lot of people here, who knows? One may not, I don't know. One, no, it was just one item. It was one zoning and a CUP, I believe. Very specific, specific CUP down off of Rain, off of, Rain, Rain, Rain.
Yeah.
So staff was prepared last time for it, but we're going to have a special meeting on the 13th, 14th?
13th.
You know, we'll see how that gets handled too, but staff, I commend staff of the job. I said it then, say it again for planning. And if the numbers get worse, Mr. Dellinger is right, we'll need to certainly reevaluate how to do things. But to meet the laws and statutes of the state to allow the public the opportunity to comment, I have no trouble with what we're doing currently. And we're also not hugging one another and handshaking and high-fiving either.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Ms. Beringer?
I would have to say that I feel more comfortable conducting the town's business in person. I want to be mindful of safety, health and safety, but I believe that we are doing a good job of that. And nobody knows which direction this epidemic is going to turn in tomorrow because it changes every day, and the best we can do is the best we can do. So I'm willing to go in whatever direction the majority of the council wishes to go in, but I believe we're more effective if we are in person.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
Currently, I don't have an issue at this point in time. Understand that the numbers are going up, and it's right, everything I've heard is right on point, and we have reason to be concerned. And as we're currently doing things, I don't have an issue with it. If we proceed on this way, I don't have a problem with it personally. And as the situation dictates, I'm quite sure we are just accordingly. So I'm fine with the current way we're doing it.
On this matter, I'm supposing, maybe I shouldn't suppose, I'll ask council, going forward, there seems to be a consensus to have in-person meetings, but I believe it's with the caveat that if a council member or more than one, even though I would hope we have a quorum here, wishes to not attend in person but wishes to, virtually, is that the right term? Is council satisfied that that should be an option at least?
Certainly.
Okay, that's understood. Good to hear, Kathy. And I'm sure Ms. Dellinger agrees with that. I'm assuming she does, yeah. So at this point, based on the consent of council, we will plan to have the scheduled meetings as in-person meetings with the expectation that this setup will continue as is with physical distancing and overflow upstairs so that we accommodate any larger crowds here. Yeah, go ahead, Mr.?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we have opened our offices back up, the town hall, you know, during Phase Two, we opened office back up and put in some precautions. I mean, the screenings, the signs on the floor, we got some sanitizer stations, masks, and we're going to be putting out more guidance to employees on mask-wearing tomorrow or within the next couple of days, but we already instituted masks. So, you know, that would be something to consider, that, you know, we do have employees here, and we have opened it up to the public and require masks. There are exceptions in the governor's order. Trying to take as many precautions as we can, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I just, you know, I'd like to have some guidance as to when is it too bad to do it? We're sitting now wearing on masks because the governor said, oh, it's so bad, we all need to wear a mask. We did it before, and we hadn't reached that threshold at all. And, I mean, again, we need to, if we're going to say it gets so bad, I'm curious to know what that metric is. In my conscience bothers me having a public hearing and telling or inviting people to come here. That's where my conscience is. I won't be attending in person again. I can't in good conscience have a public hearing for a real estate development or some other thing that requires public input, and for them to feel like they have to have a voice, they have to come in here and potentially put themselves in danger. And that, you know, that council feels differently. That's my opinion, but I think that we should have some sort of threshold as to what is the point at which we make that switch over, that something's quantifiable. I don't know what that is. But again, the situation is quantifiably worse than it was before, particularly here in Garner. You know, there's more testing, yes, there are also more cases. There weren't as many, I guarantee you, there weren't as many cases in March and April in Garner than there are right now, walking in supermarkets, walking down the street, coming into council meetings. That's my opinion, I've had my say.
Okay, thank you. Well, I certainly think, amongst other things, we're certainly trying to be consistent with executive orders coming out of the governor's office. That's been a guiding principle and would be going forward because this is something we can, we can look to analyze on somewhat of a periodic basis and hear from council from time to time if things change significantly. And certainly I'll be sensitive to staff's concerns as well. So I respect, Mr. Dellinger, your concern, and of course, there is a option as it relates to your participation virtually, but for now, I think the council has spoken at least for the immediate future, and we will evaluate that from time to time.
Thank you, Mayor. My other question is, has there been any progress on the development pipeline that Mr. Matthews had some interest in and Mr. Singleton had some interest in? Any progress on the development, the planning pipeline document?
We are working on a document for you. I don't have a date at which we can deliver that at this time, but we are trying to work that in along with the other workload that FAS.
Can you give me an estimate?
I'd rather check in with staff and confirm where they are before I give you an estimate without them being able to hear to.
Let me give you, I mean, I've shared this before, some guidance as to what I was looking for. I'll pass to council as well. The green fields are ones they already collect, and then there's some that are dates that are, you know, planning pipeline somewhere around dates that go to technical review and, do you want this copy? It'd be nice.
Is this the same as your chair?
It's very similar, yeah.
Senator Rodney.
I know that he had to take a look at some things that y'all had shared with one another.
Yes, this is, if everyone can just see, it kind of just lists out, the green fields are ones that they're already prepared in a document. The yellow would be two, we just kind of add number of units, a couple of major roads. And then the second page is the same projects brought across with sort of these dates that exist in the planning pipeline from when the application comes in to when it goes through planning commission. Some of them are applicable to, these are laid up in dates and stuff just to show you where they fit in there. But that's kind of what I'm envisioning for us to have some type of regular guidance on how many units are coming through, when we can expect them, so that we can start to make some better informed planning decisions as we look at projects. My other question was where, what's the timeframe? I know we've got the master plans being presented to council in July, and so where are we looking to do some type of discussion around fee and lieu for parks and rec as part of that discussion or after it or before it? What was the idea for how, bringing that information?
We were talking about slightly after that discussion on what recommendations come out of the Meadowbrook and Jürgen property?
Okay.
And how that might factor in what other, what we might want to do on those and what some of the costs could be, and then what we might try to do in other areas, so.
When was, when were they planning to bring the master plans to council?
July work session.
The work session, if I, if we could try to time those things similarly, because we already have five-year projections for parks and rec expenditures, even if they're ballpark. I think Mr. Singleton's questions around identifying costs, having those projections, and then marry it up with the presentation and those costs, we can have the conversation. We might not make a decision that night, but at least have those conversations in the same evening would be useful since all the information would be fresh on people's That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Dellinger. Ms. Beringer?
Yes, just a few little things. There's a slim median on Benson Road, at the intersection of Benson and Garner Road, between Webb's and Toot and Tail that needs to be mowed. It's, the little median is very narrow and it's not in good shape at all, but it does need to be mowed, and that's been ongoing. It has bright yellow flowers growing there. Also wondered about, I know that when we turn off of Benson Road onto the access to 70 West, that again, both sides of that access needs to be mowed, and I realize that's not our property, but is there something we can do to encourage DOT to get it done? Because it looks like a field of flowers on both sides, very messy looking.
No, I mean, we've been, we've been maintaining that ourselves, and I don't see that that's likely to change, so it's just a part of, it's now a part of the Public Works workload, even though it shouldn't be.
I realize they're overworked, but it is looking pretty messy out there, so if we can.
On the rotation, but it's a three to four-week rotation? It's not like a weekly, like you would do a regular yard?
It's been, well, okay, yeah, I hear you. It just looks like it's been quite a long time. Do we have any, any more indication about when we might possibly have the retreat that we talked about, or is that something that's just indefinite right now?
We have a date, and we also have a meeting with the consultant or facilitator. But the date we gave you, the 20?
This week in July, wasn't it?
Yeah, through 28.
Was it 29?
29.
29, okay.
So that's the date we're shooting for?
That has not changed.
That has not changed, yeah.
Okay, good, all right.
And that is intended to be an in-person retreat, and the facilitator, after speaking to us about some of the precautions we've put in place for other type meetings and things, at the time was comfortable that that would be consistent with some of the guidelines she's been given through the School of Government, but that could change at any point. But right now, it's scheduled to be in-person. We do not have the location nailed down yet. Our, we feel like it's the facility that has the best options for us to do distancing that we have direct control over, so tentatively the G-PAC unless something changes during our.
I'd just like to say that I have been privileged to sit in several of the classes and the retreats that Ms. Altman has done, and I think it's definitely to our benefit to participate in this. I think we'll all come out with some greater understanding of our roles and how that works. And the last, next question is, do we have any clue about the rec center and when that's going to be ready for us to occupy? Rec center?
Oh, the rec center, yeah, yeah.
They, the contractor, the roofer did some repairs to the roof, and however, during one of the last rains, we discovered a couple of other small leaks, and so right now, we're waiting for substantial rain to make sure those are complete. And they went out and investigated the pond, is, that's coming up? Friday. Friday. Oh, past Friday, okay. And took some sample to try to figure out what was going on with the G-PAC pond. So we're waiting on that. We had a material contractor testing out there and the designer and the contractor. And then the pond at Monique Street, just put the fencing back, and I think it's. There's one structural modification on the actual riser in that pond, but that's being scheduled. And the guard rail, they're trying to figure out how to put that in because there's a gas line in the way. Trying to figure that out. We've received approval from DOT to make a modification without having to move the gas line. So they were scheduling that install, or they've notified the contractor they can schedule that install. Answer to your questions, we don't have an exact date, but we're making progress on some of the items that are still outstanding. Want to make sure the project's complete in its entirety before accepting the building. Depending on what we come down to here in the end, we may modify from that, but basically, we're trying to make sure we get everything with the roadwork and the ponds and the roof leaks complete.
So does this project hold a record for the most delays of anything we've ever done?
Yes. Largest project we've ever done too, but yes.
Not exactly a title you want to claim.
But they're not going to replace the whole roof.
We don't want to accept a building that has roof leaks.
No, we don't, but at what point do we demand that they do something?
Yeah, and we have, and we've had to call in the roof manufacturer to look at some of the items and think the leaks are small enough, it's not, it doesn't warrant changing roofers and trying to get another roofer to fix another, you know, all of that. So think it's close, but until we have a substantial rain and we can test it, we're not going to know.
Disappointing?
Yeah, it's bad.
It's bad, it's really bad. How are they still in business? How can they afford to pay their employees to come to work?
They own multiple businesses, but I'm not sure how that all ties in, but.
We can get the fire department out there and flood that roof right quick and find out.
Yeah, we can fix it, we can find out. We can fix it, we can find out.
And if we don't have rain, if we don't get rain. By the time that's actually holding us up, we would. We had planned to do that previously and we had rain. So that's something that we've required of the, of the contractor in the past was to flood it substantially enough that they could do testing of it. So like that, whether it's fire department or someone else, if the natural mechanism doesn't present itself.
Think you're possibly going to get sufficient rain here, weather forecast I've seen.
One final thing, I distributed up here to all the council members, and these are for the manager and assistant town managers. Someone made available to me a timeline of epidemics for the past several centuries. And so this is just the picture so that you can look at it and see how, how we compare, which is, there is no comparison, I realize that. But it is historical information that we might want to have in our, in our possession.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Behringer, I've had a brainstorm sitting here. It might make you happy. We can kill two birds with one stone.
You're going to start with selling Tupperware?
No, ma'am.
Never mind.
But if we have to get the fire department to pull order on the roof up there, we can temporarily have a splash pad in town.
Will you?
I just couldn't resist saying that, I'm sorry. We'll have a splash pad, maybe the council members can get up there. So I apologize for being tardy, work-related. Sorry for my clothes. I did change shirts. So, yes. But anyway, I was going to ask about the rec center too. I was putting it down as Ms. Behringer was asking the questions. So just disappointing. I mean, we can get 100 and, however old the depot is, 115, 20-year building, fixed up and ready to go before we get that ready, before we get in the rec center. But based off the current status for COVID crowds and so forth, I always said it's kind of ironic, we're getting the rec center ready when we can't use it. So anyway. And the virtual July 3rd, excuse me, celebration is on July 3rd at 8 o'clock, right? Or is it July 4th?
It's on July 3rd.
3rd, but it will play throughout the weekend.
The first running is on July 3rd.
Yeah, 8 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the towns, the town produce production.
Yes.
And then I think Mr. Stevens will have another production that may play. I don't, I'm not sure when his start, but some of, some of the content we had on our July 3rd was in collaboration with him, but he also has some separate content too.
Right. His becomes available July 1st, so tomorrow, yeah.
And I believe for hours, Gray, you would know better than I, but I think you can watch it on what, youtube.com Town, Town Garner, and also on the government channel, I call it the government channel.
YouTube for sure.
Either one of those.
And Rick may have to answer whether it's going to be on the government channel at what time.
Sure, I read that from the email.
But I know YouTube, for sure, which would probably be a better experience.
Yes, yes.
He's shaking his head, yes. Either, either one, right?
Yeah, we'll be a little clearer on YouTube because, I mean, if you've got a smart TV, you can put YouTube on and see it, so it works well. My son years ago told me, asked why our channel quality was so low. And I told him, because it explained to me, that's why we're giving that channel. That's why all the community TVs are giving those channels.
They're giving analog, the analog.
Yes, that's what he said. I said, this is like something off a VCR.
It's free bandwidth, so they give you the lowest they can get by with.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews had a couple of them. One of them's kind of played off of what Gray said on the 3rd of July. I think done an excellent job putting all the information up there, plus to fly over. I think it's going to be from, what, 4 to 7 or something with a banner. And of course, with social media, and I think all of us have been tagging it, plus radio station, I work, we've been pumping it out there too. And so I think it's going to be great. And one other, I know we talked about the town attorney tonight. I just wanted to get some sense. I know we're in the process on the police chief situation. Any updates on that? Are we moving forward with what that you share?
The HR director and I are having a Zoom meeting with the search firm tomorrow to talk about logistics and how things have changed since COVID-19. Because we originally planned to have a assessment center back in, back in May. And so put all of that on hold. So we're going to talk about how, how does the new process, what's the new normal for recruitment now? Obviously, we probably can't get assessors here. But the plan is to put the advertisement back out mid-July and then have an assessment center in August, late August. Some of the preliminary work's been done. The search firm's already done some focus group discussion and gathered some information there. But we'll have to talk about the process going forward, and we'll do that tomorrow. They do have a, they have a process where they can do virtual assessment centers. I've never been a part of one, so they're going to give us a kind of a rundown of what that entails and whether they're seeing any difference in outcomes that way versus in person. I think they're going to say, no, it probably doesn't affect the outcome and the quality of the candidate pool. But anyway, we'll, we'll get more information tomorrow. But the plan is to put the ad back out mid-July.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of things I wanted to mention. The town manager sent out an email to all council members in regards to an effort by some local citizens to bring some people together. And right now, the date is set for July the 11th. There's a Ms. Payton whom Rodney and I met with her and her family. We've had several other people in the community who expressed an interest in joining in. And I know the MLK committee, the Martin Luther King Committee also has joined with this group. The idea is to have sort of a, I guess we're going to call it a community vigil. It will take place in a parking lot here in front of our town hall. And the idea is to, the mayor is scheduled to be there. Our police chief will be there to make some, the other council members who would desire to attend are welcome and can make comments as well. I think a number of ministers who want to participate as well. This is sort of a one-time event, but it might lead to other kinds of community conversations. I think that's sort of the ultimate interest of the group. This is not formed as a, as a protest of any kind, but a, a gathering of people. Let me see, it, it's being called right now, Garner Unites in Lifting Our Voices Effectively, under the acronym of LOVE. So I wanted to mention that to the council. That's, any, any other details that need to be mentioned there, Mr. Matthews?
It's the time scheduled for 10 to 11:30, the actual event.
Have any questions on that issue? If you'd like to attend, please let me know. The final agenda is not set, but officials and town staff. I think I sent to council an email message, not original with me, but one I signed off on pretty soon after the unfortunate death and the outpouring of concern. That, there was a, was basically a statement written that many mayors across the state, and on to, had a citizen or two to ask if, pending to post anything on our website regarding either position of the council, the mayor, the question would be if, statement that I sent out, we might put that on the website and the council elected to, excuse me, put that, to, to sign in on that. I would be happy to have that publicized as at least a statement from the mayor. It's getting a little bit dated actually, but wanted to just mention that to council. I think it expresses the views of many. And it's fairly short and to the point. Anybody have a question or concern or issue on that? Okay, hearing none, I'll work with Rick Mercer regarding how we might just post that on our, on our website for sure. One other thing I'd like to mention, and Rick is not in here, but perhaps he can hear me. I hope all of you saw the, the recent publication that the town has won three excellent in community awards from the NC City and County Communications. One was a first place prize, I think, for some video work and the others. But I think it speaks very well of our communications department and all those who worked on that. So I wanted to give a, a shout out to, to all who, who made that happen. It speaks well for our town. And someone's already mentioned the, the July 3 virtual celebration this year. I hope you can tune into that. And for all the people out there listening, I hope you'll participate in that as well. I believe that's all I have at this time. John or Matt? Okay, nothing, all right. Anybody else? For the good of the group, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Segmented by Mr. Matthews. Behringer, I believe, segmented the motion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And as carried, we are adjourned. Hope to see you all.